We're opening July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three select board meeting. We have. Linda asked if we could move the tax rate. So it wasn't at the end. So I said, all right, you vote for us for this. If that was all right, seeing as we have some guests tonight. That I wanted to go on. And I might have some select word comments in at the end, but. Okay. Arrival of the meetings of July third, two thousand twenty-three. Motion. Approve.
Make the motion.
You have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on those meetings? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. So carry. The emergency meeting, the select board meeting on July eleventh.
Make the motion to accept July budget. All secondary ones.
Do any further discussion on those? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Both. So carry. Uh, the special select board meeting on July fourteenth. Motion for the row.
Make the motion for approval.
Second.
I'm sorry.
Any further discussion? I just saw one on the second page. It said, uh, senior vice men suggested the road form inspection of bridges. Actually, I asked the select board to inspect the bridges. Hearing none?
Well, I'll make a mention of the auction, etc., that is for that correction.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. So carry. Comments from the community? So we have, um. Goings with us tonight, uh, they wanted to discuss, uh, Lurvy Road, which is currently a trail. So I would like to, um. Speak to the board on your request. Um. I know I'm spoken to Brian and current head of the rest of the board hasn't.
Um, we're proposing suggesting outstanding hoping to have the last piece that's still plus four. The, I think it goes up and. Uh, these. The. To motivate the declassify down to the trail at least.
Right. Uh, so it gets involved from here. We've been banging coming in on your, by the way, it's very awful. It's a lot of us to do a little bit of research. Uh, so we contacted, uh, rotten work. You know, see, he, I mentioned that has a lot of expertise in this area. And, uh, he did identify that, um. The road is currently a trail.
All of them were just.
All of it.
Even when it's before you want.
Okay, it's one so high.
Oh, that's.
Which is shop backs. Two or three.
Sorry.
So, um, yeah, I'll read what came back from project. Uh, he said, I can confirm with the screenshot of the official PT Trans. Uh, town highway map dated twenty twenty is that Lurvy Road is filed. My PT Trans is a legal trail at, uh, zero point seven five miles. Uh, that implies the town filed the proper paperwork with PT Trans passed. Okay. Yes. Um, therefore, it is my understanding that. Legal trails can be blocked with the aids, cane, log, boulder, etc. Along with any policies the select board may set. Uh. And then there's a general description of a discontinuance, um, of a road and trails. Uh, and also suggests that we should check with our county attorney for our legal opinion. Um, so. You know, what we have learned here is that, uh, it is designated as a trail end to end.
End to end.
End to end.
Because you did just say three quarters of a mile.
Right. Yeah, how much far is it?
Three quarters of a mile is about three thousand and some odd feet.
Right, yeah, the trail itself, if you look at the map. It, uh. You showed us the end there. Goes in three quarters of a mile and then becomes trail. I mean, that's the portion of looking at maps like Google would show it to be a road.
Right.
And if you go on Google and say, you know, hate food, strong.
Falls in front of.
To, uh.
The landmark or whatever.
It sends you on Lurvy Road.
Right.
But we can't control Google.
No.
Just. Control. Just.
Right, so, but so officially that three quarters of a mile is still plus four. Beginning from the whole thing, the problem.
Yeah.
You're saying end, end to end, it's just all trail, including the three quarters of a mile. So at least it actually go to Google to tell you, but. Does that, what, what's, can we? Um. Can we, then, does it need a road sign? Is a road sign that doesn't say private is a traffic for people also? You know what I mean?
It's a road sign, yeah.
Also, there is on the end of our drive home. It's. It's.
It says Lurvy Road, GR seventeen.
Okay. So should we have the road sign removed? If it's on the.
Definitely checking that whether that's possible or not, because now it's a trail.
Right here, it's that where we do not have a R seventeen. Before you. So that. Yeah, that should be taken down.
But can what would our address be?
Ah.
If it was private, it wouldn't be, it's easy, that'd be. Uh, right now, your, uh, your address is something, something Lurvy Road, right? Yeah, and there's no reason for that to change.
Okay.
Um.
Even though it's a trail.
Even though it's a trail, right.
Still hasn't.
It's awesome. I mean, the post office implying you, we have nine one one.
Yep.
We did, okay.
That's, that's it. That's the nine one one.
Okay.
I don't see, I don't see all that years ago.
Yeah, I don't see a reason that that needs to be changed.
Okay.
But then I thought, you know, what?
I think maybe the, you know, a month or maybe we should decide that, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll take a look at that. We'll just need to make sure everything's okay with the post office. Just whether the emergency services, that there be a fire truck or ambulance trying to locate on the grass. And so I understand your point about the road name being posted, but. They would need to know how to locate the.
Absolutely.
So it's one or the other. They're taking the sign now. That's not Lurvy Road, and you can see how anyone will find you.
So we'd have to go to the data, go back to Baldwin Brook, who didn't have us. Yeah, it's up to maybe nine one one for it. But I think that's something that we have to do more of.
Okay.
We can work on that, we do. I mean, we could decide. Can it just be a Lurvy Road schedule?
Or private.
Or private. It's not private at this point.
Oh, right, okay, yeah.
So I think we, if we get back to really what the, the, the issue that's driving is, um. Motorized vehicles on the, on the road, the trail, whatever we're talking about. So what this was telling us, I think, is that it is designated as a trail. And the board does have the option to change it off. Having said that, and if we look at the vast trail that intersects it up and down, um. Does blocking it not do any good?
Yes. Okay. From, from Baldwin Brook point, which we just discussed with, uh, and you and I, and I discussed yesterday with the VAST. Organization, the association, um, we discussed changing, uh, gating the Baldwin Brook side. And we discussed the other side, but not knowing if that's possible to keep the other side. Since that's the intention of Lurvy Road Trail in West Hill that cuts through. Last that woods, it means, I don't know if that's up to Wolfie or if that's up to state or not, whoever is that.
But we have the trail.
You own the trail, so somebody may be, may have gated on that end as well. I think that's, that, that, the VAST Association was like, yeah, let's bait it.
So why, um, and so this trail, you said, is so overgrown, huh?
Well, that part is very much not overgrown. Coming off West Hill, as you know, West Hill that leads through the Garfield is a major thoroughfare now. To get through exactly its pond, which Green River is kind of growing, developing in there. It leads to a lot of people that dirt bike and four wheel down Lurvy Road. And that piece and VAST Trail kind of are one. And then there's abuse with all sections down there. One leads back out to Lurvy Road, which was the old VAST Trail. And then the other one leads, um, to the corner of our property where it crossed Baldwin Brook. And the VAST Association was totally unworth gated on our end. And they weren't sure if they were allowed to gate the other.
And, um, so if there's not reasonably going to gate on the West Hill side. Can someone go around the gate and get on it?
Yeah, these guys talked about trouble boulders. If there was anywhere, it's question, questionable. There was actually a Y when you come off West Hill, you go past that woods. It comes up on Y and there's giant tunnels. And so, yes, there's two plates right there, and when it comes into one, it would have to be gated after that point. Let people be able to probably turn around here. Um, like I said, I discussed that with the VAST Association, I was good at, um. My last group, yes, but then. The other guy was Brian and somebody here and I was here. But he said, uh, they would be happy to grab the boulders from the yard. Drop them anywhere that is appropriate. And I also thought that was a totally different aspect from the conversation room. Even though it comes with this whole road discussion. Now it seems to be the same conversation, which is positive.
Whoever's standing.
Like hunters or anything, is it just, um, you know, there, there, hunters are out there.
In hunting season.
Using that Lurvy Road.
Um, uh, not in my property anymore. Um, not through, they, they don't know if it's that spread out. Um. That wouldn't, I wouldn't be like necessarily against people going through the trail to go back into the woods to respectfully. Or use the VAST trail or whatever, but. That's.
I guess I meant, do you ever see anybody walk?
Very, very rare. If. And you don't see people walking quietly through the woods.
Yeah.
Now, you use dirt bikes and four wheelers. But the trail that our driveway turns into is less than a trail. It's, it's deep pushback. With nothing, you, you, once you get to that point of our driveway where it turns up to the gout. As soon as you've gone three feet in. You can follow the river, but the trail is very lost. Doesn't actually cross the road or used to cross the road and continue up to Lurvy Road. You actually have to walk a few paths there, follow a little logging trail. You come into the ponds and then kind of hook back around and then you come out and you're like, oh. Hey, I can find my way now. It's very much, if there's hunters that go back there, they've been doing it for a really long time. They leave no marker, made no sounds.
All right, so I think the, the request to, uh. As we, we call it throw out, uh, you can route. Corrected us, that's, uh. Like a, we're, we're a territory. But we all know what it is, and that means that the, the, the select board can. Uh, allow that road to become property of the abiding claim. And that's the request. And the reason for the request, to understand it, is, uh, we can, we can control the entrance and the exit. I think. And so I think what we learned, because it is designated as a trail, then. We, we can also, you know, have that same road without. Losing the right, losing the property, it's counter right. Uh, and my opinion, the memory is, uh. I, I personally don't like the town giving that property to anyone. Uh, because it is, it becomes, you say forty, fifty years in the future. That property, that road, that trail may become a road. Uh, and with the abiding, uh, landlord, he would, would may want to have access to their land within that area. But it's not gonna happen in the short term. But once we lose something, it's gone with, um. And it is a, we would love to see it be a, a, a public, uh, trail. Um, that people can use for hiking and, and snowboarders, most, uh, I say possibly skiing, that kind of thing.
Is, is that not what the Catalon Trail is?
Yeah, the Catalon Trail is, yeah, primarily used for.
Which there is the VAST Trail right there, which is hundred feet away on the other side.
Yeah.
That's all. I'm not, I'm, I understand Catalon board gets interest in keeping the.
Taking, yes, that's my original idea. I'm not speaking for the whole board. Uh, and, and even that, it seems that we have, we have, uh, very similar laws. If that would change, we can, and we can behave. The board would have an interest in taking as many of the trail preservation and those who were. Blocking the road and high event would include that. We can achieve the same goal as the children.
Any other moments?
Minutes?
But.
Same issue came up with this, where we, in the devil.
Yeah.
We kept that recent, because we ever wanted to get up to the old gate building. From east.
Someone.
It'll restore that a lot without big deals. I think if we were to. Hate to say gates are broken. Someone's really somehow take it down. Big hole, whatever. I think if it was restricted at both ends with. Rocks, it could be later, if everyone wanted to be. Presidential property out there, I think that would be the best idea. And then we would still, at least it was four foot wide, so mobile could go through. And that, it won't cut down. I hate to say it, four wheelers in the motor box. But I, I hate to see people going up.
That's, that's a problem, really, you know, just probably looks in dirt bikes and especially a two block. Screaming yell.
Well, I live in town, you want to do these things, because they hit their chain, your house, now you're.
Good.
And that's two, three, four lanes, so, you know. Even if we gate it. They wouldn't find a way around it. Either they'll make a new trail out around, doesn't matter, dirt bikes.
I mean, I've, I've found even in the past three weeks inside personally. With, you know, tools and machinery, bolts and big logs, it's already. I've watched them drive right, they look at it, you know, it's a lot of work and they drive right by with a lot of.
They go with you.
Probably, we drive down the road and take the other, and then they go all the way down to Sanville and all the way up Sanville and take my spill. And then go up and over and down.
Isn't that more of a sign?
It slows people from coming in the garage.
It's still there.
It's, it is still there, correct?
You know, we're not talking about Asian driver. What are you, what are you talking about dating?
Yeah, after your, after your house.
Right, right.
I'm not, I'm not.
I, I.
You're allowed to gate Lurvy Road.
I think that it's.
That's your house.
As far as that piece of Lurvy Road, it's the other end of it that's, that is the concern. Um, in our driveway, because of the number right, people sign there. People tend to take the VAST Trail. Which, like I said, the VAST is happy to gate that end of rock and, uh, the other end is on. The town of Baldwin. And, and state Vermont, it's.
You're talking about the west coast, so.
The West Hill Lurvy Road Junction is, is now, but we're on purpose. The West Hill Lurvy Junction.
Yeah, and that could be close, right?
And that's, I mean, that's, that, that's, that's, um, as much as we could really hope for.
Yeah.
Knowing that Lurvy Road is truly a trail, then that's, you know, that's.
So can you clarify again what you're asking, because. Where was that capital was your house? Now it's could be one place. What, what are?
Yeah, it's a huge, right, there.
Yeah, I know.
Now, the VAST Trail and the driveway, Lurvy Road, um, very close.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if, I can walk it with my six year old in less than five minutes.
Yeah.
Um, it's really close and it's literally just on the other side of the river, so. The deterrence is from the other end. Most of the traffic is coming from the West Hill Lurvy Junction. And so what we're asking is, I, I guess at this point, a way to block that in. Um, and if that's VAST, that commission, block the other end. I would s- I wouldn't see why not. That's our property.
If we, you mean, you want to talk about this, we, we are pretty far away from here.
That's cause we didn't have our property.
Well, it does, because this, this dark.
It doesn't even show.
This dark is the agency of natural resources, so that's all the green river. And I went on a look down that, so that line where the color changes is where your property is. What you want, she's saying right here, the window, with this.
Right, right near you, you said, right at the junction of the VAST Trail, the color change. I mean, where, where, where it runs through our property, I can, I can look right at the VAST Trail, you know. From my, from my bedroom window. Like it's right there, I just. If it's only, if it's only meant to be used for snowmobiles, then it's. It's meant to be used for snowmobiles and it shouldn't be for four wheelers and their bikes.
I agree.
And that's.
Why nobody.
That's almost trying to figure that. Well, I think that gating it would really slow it down a lot or blocking it. I think rocks would be less of a.
On the West Hill, so.
On the West Hill side, since VAST has permission from the landowner, Chris, us, to gate all this up. Would be whatever we have to do. Yeah. So in, in answer to your question, yes, uh, the West Hill Lurvy Road Junction, which Lurvy Road Trail Junction is. Is what the compensation has turned into a request for blocking the fence.
Not blocking, blocking.
No. Yeah, she is a good. But, but to me, it's, I see that this first step is, is blocking. Actually, with the block that ended, she would have.
I would like to look at it, though.
Yeah.
I mean. I, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm in agreement with you. I would like to look at it, so, um. I'd like to go up and then. Just see what it looks like. For.
Is there a number on the right vehicle sign on that, on the other end?
No.
That's another thing.
There's no signs. In fact, when we went up there yesterday, there was a huge pile of garbage. When you turn around West Hill onto. Lurvy Road Trail. When you turn, when you made that junction, turning, it's like that. And it's not just like garbage, that, it's like weird garbage. People kind of like, right, that's weird, like plastic tons and like. They were all the way up, they, they had, yeah.
But that's been a problem in that area for several years.
Yeah.
Um, so. You know, at first, um, exactly which time, the state conference right there. In the winter, they don't maintain it. And it becomes a, a homeless. Yeah, there's a lot of garbage.
Yeah.
But kind of a different problem.
It is a different problem.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we remove the Lurvy Road sign because, um, it's not a road, it's a trail. Um. And that, um, we go up and look at that and when we are next meeting, um, vote on. Um. The resolution for that, but I, I'd like to see it, even on the favor, I'd like to go and see it.
If you remove the road sign.
Okay, well, then, then we talk to the nine one one people and figure out how to do that. About the, that P T, right?
Well, then you'll be Baldwin Brook, right? Pretty right.
They have to, they have to change the adpost itself.
If the round sign is not there, there's no emergency vehicles to find it.
Right.
Okay. So required, just putting up the yellow blocks, we didn't do much of a.
Right.
We don't even have to put any yellow, we put a number on it.
Yeah.
Well, we're not going to take the sign down. Carl.
No.
What we were, you, you were, then, when that happens. You know, that might prevent people from thinking they can drive down there. You know.
I'll say it to Washington.
Okay. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. So, Devin, next week we'll bring that back up and, um. Hopefully it won't rain a lot and we can get out there. Do you want to go out there as a group or just individually?
Look, we're.
Right. Would you like to even look at the situation before you make a decision?
Yeah, that's first check.
Okay, I'm going up, because I will see.
The road.
You know, see whether these boulders, whether we're going to truck in there to get boulders or we need to gate, you know. I just want to look at it before we just. Silence.
I didn't mean it.
That won't work.
They just did so much work on that, on that. VAST is very possible.
Okay. Okay, thank. Are we going to quickly bring up the tax rate? Linda?
I still have a thought, I had to find you, if you'd like to check it, I think we heard. Uh, a packet of, um, this year's tax rate based on the, um, grant list the list just gave me. I also sent out what last year's was. And I also sent out what the tax rate was at school. And what the exemption for the G S M's was. So that comes down to, um, last year's tax rate, the home said was two point three two six two. This year is two point three three oh seven. So we didn't really leave it at almost a penny, but not. Once. But on non-residential, we did go up quite a bit. It was two point three seven oh seven last year. This year it's two point four two oh. So it is a living extension. I checked it again today, uh, to see if the rain, our new process, it might equate and it stays.
Because of the story. I was, I was looking in.
The item actually, but the the school rate went down so upset, it's putting that. Town last was point seven six seven eight, and this year point seven nine seven three. Uh, but the listeners were, actually came up with three million more, so this year than last year, so that's very good. So our, um, our grant list is.
Primarily, did you mean, not resonate?
Yes, the non-residential is the one that got hit the most, even on the school rate. Um, last year was one point five five eight four, this year is one point five three three three, so the education passed. Yeah.
So what made a good look for them?
For non-residential, the tab, our rating went up, and also the school rate, that went up about two cents. So when we went up four cents, they went up two cents, so you're six cents.
So it's the same proportion?
Yes, it is, yeah. I was, I was just, I was predicting if the rain was had gone up about three cents, we would have gone up. Along the road factors, but we came up with more, so we are. We're okay, I don't think anybody will complain. Being the non-resident.
I'm on you.
Okay, well, we're the non-resident people, but we have to review, so I always feel there's an offset.
I would bet that ninety percent of all towns probably all went up something this year, and I bet down Southern Prairie State, it's more than that.
I don't, I have to say, it'd be a pain in the, dear, we're not lying. They're doing well.
And the bottom line is, if it is, but it is, right?
And that is based on the budget, that this, it's not a food, it is a big budget.
Any other questions? Most to, um. Approve the home state tax rate at two point three three oh six. And the non-residential tax rate at two point four two oh four. Between three, twenty four. Um, yeah. And the second.
Second, yeah.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Who's opposed? So, period.
So I will just want to add that, um, I'm not waiting on, uh. Even pretty many taxes will have to start the office first, because. A lot of homes that have not come in, um, and so I'm just waiting to know. And maybe start at first, um. Instead, uh, payments, but they would be never went on office first, so.
Right.
Do we, unless that happens, resend if I wait.
Okay, listen, then, around. Correspondents, um, I'll let Kurt go.
Um, so. We probably have a packet of today, uh, for multiple reasons, it's working, it's part of it. Uh, so the correspondence has been primarily coming from FEMA. And the state, uh, regarding blood services. Um, and I'm going to compile all of those into a single email and send them off to our review. They're all informational in nature, like what we do in, uh. Any particular situation with regards to FEMA in play. Um, the other piece of correspondence is. Uh, that we did receive a. A motion, um, from the lawsuit. A Damien Webb lawsuit, to the county office. And, uh, and you recall that. Maybe one of our previous meetings, um, our law firm. Uh, put in a motion to dismiss. Um, based on a couple of legal, uh. Frame that are going to be, uh. Timelines. And. That was responded to by opposition to motion to dismiss by the plaintiff. Um, and, uh. This really is doing nothing other than just driving things out. Who's pro se, who's representing himself. What's a lot of, uh. Law. Um, and. From, from my, uh, understanding, our lawyer, this is just. There's really no basis, no basis, there is really no basis. But. This might be once you've done.
So did the court make the decision that is in process, you know, we can go forward, or? Since you filed with the bill?
This isn't a bill.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, he, we filed an opposition to motion. Um, and then this, I believe, tells before the court. And the court naturally.
He decided they'll be in the draw.
Uh, that knows very much.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I would think that the court would rule on the, you know, town's. Motion to dismiss, because. But the, you know, Webb did not comply with the statute of limitations. And so, yeah, his argument is against that, but. In his response, it really doesn't address why to have missed. The statute of limitations, so, you know, I. I don't think the court, you know, I think the court will, uh, side with the town.
And the problem is it takes them to the. You mean, we have to import it?
We're still on a COVID time, I mean, of course, so.
I I I see this as just churning law, law on this. And, uh, R S C T is named for our. In this name, uh, and I think they quoted twenty thousand dollars as an expectation, but this stuff gives up the bill of.
This guy's nation of money.
Yeah.
We all trust, we're certain people like this.
So that's all right.
We also received, uh, something from our insurance company, just so that the recreation field was not, this year, property schedule, so we. It is not covered.
Right.
The numbers are, you know, all of it looking down there, like, you know, fall fillers. Not good.
Uh, I could just interject, I spoke with Carrie Crawford, who is the senior playing specialist with VRCT this morning, and she said that. Uh, it were open land, any property on there, like, the ball field is not covered. In a flood situation, if it had been vandalized or stolen. That would be different, but regardless, um, they don't pay the flood damage to. You know, for athletic fields.
So then, that's when you can apply the payments. Again, with an island, I don't know, you're chance, and then you can. Got a FEMA.
Right.
By law.
But does that mean you have, we need to put in the plane anyway, because you need to get over island?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
No, I think you have it, so.
Yeah. I think this is the first one, the schoolhouse. I will read on the near done.
Yeah, I want to get to that, because Nelson's here anyway.
Yeah. Awesome, so we could start, so, uh, thank you Nelson for joining us today. Uh, so all selectors should have, uh, three, uh, yeah, three packets on their desk. One of them will be labeled in highlighter, button summary, bow range. The other one will be actual constraints to analysis that Nelson is. And then finally. One pager you see here is something that I typed up. That includes a response from Nelson S H K Architects, uh, in regards to if. Uh, their rep, their renovation. It is a like one, and if they should, if you all continue. To support the schoolhouse committee in, uh, to revitalize that historic building. Um, so please take a moment to read that one pager and. We can have them for the discussion. So like it states there on the one pager, over the past few months, S H K Architects have been doing. The first step. Of the, uh. Architectural, uh. Of an architectural setting of the schoolhouse building, this first step was mainly to focus on the. Uh, constraints of the building. And if you recall, when we previously brought this, uh, proposal to the selector, you. Requested that we do this first step. Which costs roughly, it would be about ninety five hundred dollars. Let's do this first step first, let's see what the findings are, and then we'll circle back around to see if we would like to fund. The remaining portion of this particular project, which would come out to be nine thousand four hundred fifty five dollars for. Instead, a conceptual, uh, three conceptual layouts. Uh, and Nelson, please correct me if I'm wrong, I believe in your proposal, you said for steps two through four. It would, uh, the name deliverable would be three conceptual layouts.
Uh, that, that does sound right, I don't have the proposal in front of me at this time, but, um, that, that sounds generally accurate, yes.
Here's my question.
And so, once you give me the one pager, uh, if you would like to look at the architectural diagrams, please do. But I think. In the. Most important documents are going to be done somewhere. So, uh, S H K Architects provided a low range cost and also a high range cost. And. Currently, the low range is. What the conversation we announced had, this is the minimum price it will cost to make the building safe for people to enter. And so right now, it's estimated to be six hundred seventy nine thousand nine hundred and ninety six dollars on the row end. And with that item being. Uh, seven hundred seventy five thousand four hundred and four dollars. Nelson, uh, if you can, do you mind describing the. Why there are two price, uh, price costs presented?
Sure, um, so, so as Salvador said, um, the, the kind of purpose of this first step was really to, to test. Uh, determine what the sort of basic, uh, improvements that would be required in the building to make it habitable again, and Salvador, that's correct, safe, warm and dry. And I'll add accessible to it. Um, uh, so thi- this is a really preliminary, um, study of, of what the building needs. Um, the reason there are two cost proposals provided, um, is that at early stages of design like this. Um, putting the, sort of a, a single fixed number to some scopes that are really sort of, um. Not, not fully understood, you know, and, and not fully designed, as we're up in the very beginning of the stages, like. Um, the, the range provides for a little bit of flexibility as, as the project kind of continues to develop, a- assuming it goes forward.
Awesome, thank you, Nelson.
I think when I looked at this, there was, uh. Between the low and high, there's actually a square footage difference. Um, it, it, is that right?
Um, there should not be a square footage difference, um, the, the floor area is two thousand four hundred eighty four square feet. Um, so there, there may be a clerical error there, but, um.
Okay, so it's the same for both?
It, it's the same for both, we're not talking about any additions, um, this, you know, I, I did want to kind of just clarify again. You know, I, I understand the town has some ideas about, um. You know, adaptive reuse, different uses within the building. This proposal and this scope of work and the cost associated with it, don't, don't include any of the, um, the sort of fit outs, uh, for those, you know, future uses. It's really sort of just to return the building to a, a place where it can sort of, um. Reasonably support, um, people being inside of it safely.
Interior and exterior.
Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that part.
Interior and exterior?
Um, well, to the extent that, you know, the exterior scope, um, at this time, uh, there's a little bit of regrading and drainage that's happening around the perimeter of the building to try to, again, I guess, um. Acknowledge the kind of dry, uh, uh, aspect of the project. Um, but in terms of accessibility, um, we are currently showing, uh, um, an accessible ramp. Which, um, would, would provide access to the building for everyone, um, from, and that ramp would start from an accessible, um, stall in the current parking lot. So, um, there's not a, there's not a lot of exterior scope in the project, um. Uh, I guess, when you say exterior, I'm, I'm thinking site work. Um, we are, of course, addressing the envelope of the building, um, so roof and, and siding, cladding, things like that.
That's what I was thinking with exterior.
Yeah, yeah, so the, the shell of the building is, is addressed in this, um, in this, uh, proposal, yep.
Thank you.
Sure.
I think another question we have is just kind of a high level, general. Uh, thought, I mean, from your work is, uh, if you, with your background and expertise. Feel that this building is, is something that can be restored.
Um, yes, I mean, I, so we, we work with, um, existing buildings, um, every day, that, that's a kind of a, a focus of the practice and, um. In- including historic buildings, um, like, like these, and. Um. So, the, the simple answer to your question is that, um, anything can be, you know, any, any building can kind of be salvaged, and it's, it's sort of a value judgment at some point of whether or not the cost is sort of, um, is worth it. Um, to, you know, I, I can't directly answer that question for you all, um, but I can say. Um, you know, th- this, in terms of historic structures, this building has a lot of integrity left in it, um. And when we talk about integrity, we're, we're thinking about, um, you know, is the, does the building exterior and interior, the spaces, um, inside? The materials and finishes, are those largely the original fabric of the building? And in this case, they are, um, of course, you've all seen the inside and you know that, um. Certainly the floor, um, and, and other portions of the building are going to need some attention. Um, but the, the, the sort of, the, the original kind of volume and, and the, the sort of spatial aspects of, of the project, and, and many of the finishes are still intact. Um, and so there is like historic integrity in the, in the structure. Um, you know, I, I'm, I think I'm projecting my own sort of like fondness for the building in the short time I've kind of worked on it to, um. To say that, like, this seems like a, a, um. A building that has some, um, you know, we, we've talked about the architectural kind of significance, but maybe just historic significance to the town, and I'm. I, I, again, you all have sort of interacted with the building more than I have. Um, but, but it, you know, these structures have a certain patina and collection of time, uh, that, that's, um. That's not really, you're not able to replicate that, so sure, we could knock the building down, start fresh and put something back there that's the same volume. Um, it won't have the same feel inside of it, and that's, um, that's just a fact, and, uh. But again, there's that sort of value judgment of, just, you know, does the sort of return on investment, uh, make sense for, for the town? Um, you know, the only other thing I wanted to add is. There is a little bit of a, there is some time sensitivity here. O- only in the, like, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll talk. O- only in the like, you know, we'll we'll talk about the roof um specifically that. Uh i- if you were going to do anything, you know, or something, but not everything, um. Um sort of putting a halt to the um uh sort of water intrusion and and the the sort of like rippling um. Deteriorative effects that that has would be a sort of a a primary focus. Um but but again, going back to your first question, I think the building um has historic value, I I would assume to the town architectural uh significance and the location. Um as you've all identified, I know the rail trail is um um in in tough shape right now, but um that was seemed to be a motivator for the for the original proposal and. So in terms of location, there's the the schoolhouse has a lot of um, a lot of reasons to recommend it for for rehabilitation.
Absolutely.
Sorry, that was a long answer.
No, it's good. I'm glad to thank her.
So part of the next step if we improve this nine thousand plus. Would that include like uh what you said, you know, you should start, say, on a roof and then you should do this and this thing? But it kind of outlined um. The important steps that we should be following?
Yeah, so I think um, you know, we we can include a a a sort of a um. A a a an outlook, right? A schedule of kind of here's, here's how the the project would uh be developed. The the next step was really to to test um. Uh in my understanding was to test the viability of some of the um. The town's kind of adaptive reuse, um you know, some of the maybe the tenants that might uh or or the uses that might be in the building. So um. Uh the 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 kind of three conceptual designs that Salvador talked about, um. That would, we would start to kind of test those new uses. Um but certainly, we would um include uh. Sort of a forecast of here's the, here's the um. The the process going forward um and kind of like major milestones from here. I'm I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm not sure if I fully heard your question, and I apologize if I missed part of it, but please repeat it if I did.
Thinking like for funding, you know, we're not gonna have any money.
Oh, funding.
Once, but so I think one of the things the committee is kind of wanting to know is. The different steps, if we move to go forward and and get more plans, and then. What are the steps for funding um to make it just a shell? I mean, we've decided what we want to do with it. At this point, if it works. Um I don't think we would um. You know, make it so that they could be in there, the owner would come in and kind of bring in their equipment and so forth. So so do we do the foundation first? Do we do the roof first? Do we put the windows in first? What? That that.
Yeah, so.
Because we can't do it all at once.
Yeah, so so um. The i- if we're thinking about this, this, so I I kind of mentioned the roof, right, as a a kind of a primary, you know, first thing to kind of. To shed the water away, right? That's logical. Um, you know, uh. I- i- we could, we could certainly prioritize these scopes. Um envelope would be near the top, right? Because if we're, you know, it wouldn't make sense to, let's say, so part of the the structural scope is a. Uh full foundation replacement and first floor replacement. I don't know if, I don't know how into the details you are into the report, but but that's the recommendation. Um and, you know, in terms of like order of operations, it would not make sense to invest the money to do those scopes. And have a leaking roof overhead that's going to, again, sort of deteriorate and rot away this brand new first floor that you just invested in. So um. You know, priority would be for envelope first to kind of stem the tide of of water intrusion. Um uh next, I think it's um, next, I think it would be the structural elements because um uh, you know. We we're seeing sort of um some differential settling and things like that, which can start to sort of have um uh negative effects inside the building. Um uh systems, you know, building systems, so mechanical, electrical, plumbing systems. We've just sort of included a kind of a wave of the hand to to replacement of those. Systems, um but that's certainly something that would be required to, you know, make the building uh habitable again. That that would probably be uh, you know, third tier. And then the accessibility piece, um not to push it to the back, but um. You know, assuming we can solve all these other problems, that accessibility, making sure that everyone, you know, universally has access to the building, that's something we we believe in and design to. Um but in terms of like, you know, being being a little bit um. Well, well, well prioritizing, I think that would have to be the the fourth um priority in this kind of list.
And Linda, um I do want to mention that Brian Edwards, when he did that initial thinking assessment for the uh schoolhouse. Uh it may be one of the last pages. He does list out from, I think, a list of one to fifteen, the priority in which we should. Uh address issues. And the points Nelson brought up are reinforced in Ryan's uh listing as well. If you all would be interested in that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think Ryan, Ryan indicated everything is a high priority. Um. Which, you know, that that doesn't really get to your question. I I I do think it would have to be the envelope stuff first, and and specifically, the roof is doing the bulk of the work. The roof does need some structure.
I wasn't asking you to tell me. I was just asking you if it would be in the report. That's all.
Yep.
That's all.
It it will be, yeah, we can start to break it down. Yes, absolutely.
And currently, L C P I'm working with senior staff to figure out uh funding opportunities. For the schoolhouse or will it, in order to obviously not put such a. Ever very long term in the town when it comes to this project, but know that there are other pressing projects that are going to be a problem. Um so that's something that. Uh Seth Jensen will be circling back around with working about and schoolhouse community is. Uh if we continue this uh particularly work with SHKS. The long title.
So we certainly have a management transition.
Yeah, so uh we met on Tuesday uh as a staff, and it seems that Seth will be. Uh transitioning into the project uh manager lead. Um similar to how he was when I first met you all in in November or something, how he came to the first meeting. And said, here's how I'm taking over. So it'll be, it'll be, he'll just be jumping back in. I'm gonna catch him up to what must be going on. Um because I know we do have another uh, the municipal plan grant uh proposal. For the site uh cycle. It's already, yeah, fully entirely on the site. Uh that's. Going to kick off, so that'll be brand new with Seth taking over.
We work with them.
Oh, I don't know. I I don't, I don't know if they love you. That would be his love.
First that I was doing in Australia.
Yes, I am. We are, I leave L C P C in about two weeks, um going back home to California. So that's why I'm trying to figure out how we transition from. Uh to a new leader for L C P C and schoolhouse maybe. But uh, thank you very much, Nelson. I think you may, you answered hopefully all the questions that I wanted, that everyone had. I guess the next question is.
In the board, um yes, I'm not sure to move forward with the with the project and. This report proved that um. It's worth moving ahead. Um with this, it's nice that we have. All this information together, you know, you never know what money is gonna. Our grants are available at some point, so we're, I really feel like we should be prepared for what's. You know, we can step right in. Um. I know that the time I'm looking at, you know, forty.
How much Nelson with the foundation replacement cost?
Um, let me see here. Uh. So I'm just gonna quickly compile some numbers here in my head. So there there's um, there's a lifting of the building, right, in in its current place. There's um, that's. Let me see, I'm gonna, don't hold me to the exact number, but I I'd say the the foundation lifting and the excavation associated with that. Um is uh on the order of. Looks like eighty to a hundred K. And I'm I'm pulling mostly from the low range here, but um. Yeah, on that order, eighty to a hundred for the foundation.
My experience with working on different buildings, seems like if you do the foundation first. The rest of the structure then have a level. But if you don't fix the roof, then you start messing around with the foundation, the roof is gonna fire.
Hmm. It's it's a fair point. Uh I mean, the the. The the house, the the sort of structure lifters and movers that we've dealt with um uh. Are are quite good at at stabilizing and and um. Uh shoring for um the the movement that happens um up and down. In this case, we're just go, we are literally going up and down. Um. It it's a, it's a fair point. I mean, I think if if the money was available, um you know, if we could do the the roof and foundation first floor together. I think that would be sort of an, maybe an optimal kind of first uh package. Um I'm just seeing the the sort of effects of the of the rot um. Kind of uh in into some of the framing inside, you know, under the roof. Um and uh. That just throws up some immediate uh red flags that that we might not have much of a structure left to um. To support if if we're um, if we're not sort of addressing the water intrusion issues um early on.
Right, but my point is if the building is on level now, we're setting at different points and fix the roof.
Well, he didn't say that was a, you just.
Right, but now you're gonna have to redo the roof.
Uh there are, it's all be done. It's, I was just asking in which order. Should they be run?
I might, my feeling is the foundation.
Well, I explained that we're not even there yet right now.
But I mean, if you did both with like. Nelson said, you have better chance of.
Yeah.
Stopping all the water. That's all I'm saying.
We just right now want to. We need approval to spend nine thousand quarter and fifty five dollars from our vote funds to continue with this grant. And that's what we're looking for approval for tonight. Make.
Then we improve that. We'll second you.
Do we have any other questions or comments? As a favor. Close. So we're waiting for your input um. Before um with more details. On how we move forward. So we can look for funding.
Yeah, uh L C P C will help with the search for funding and uh Nelson will be in contact uh sooner than later, so I can, we can figure out.
Sounds good.
Thank you for, thank you for the bonus.
Thank you.
Yeah, yes, thank you all. Thanks for your time.
Night.
Good night.
Thank you for having us to continue this work, and we think it will all be great. All right, yeah. Let's see what other uh projects. So. Uh we won't get wastewater. One of the, the main reason why we're here today, uh Tori and I, is to talk about the wastewater committee. And the. Really the expectations that that committee uh will have. Uh the timeline here that you see on this little paper is a rough draft, and we just uh. It was something quick that we put together just to show this one uh school uh select work. The the process leading up to the bottom load in March. Um so please turn it in to my files again. We made those simple uh steps happen. Um but when we're talking with senior staff at L C P C. It's very, very important that. Throughout this process. The town looks and is the main. Uh point of content. If the office don't look great at L C P C, it has the. Main main group pushing this forward. We really need the town to uh stand behind this project and be the leading force. And that starts with having a more formal wastewater committee. And I know that we have met in the past, um. Which is great, because there is obviously already some enthusiasm to be part of the committee or just having a party, because. Uh there's not a ton, there may not be a ton of. Hands being raised in front of it. But I think one of the first major steps that can be done is. Creating a more formal page on Volkan's website with typical committee members. Um currently, does the select board know who is officially on that committee?
Um the town select board is, you know, um. Appointed people, but I know who. In the beginning, um yeah, not many.
Obviously.
You're right. Myself, you're fine. I ran, I wrote no one in. As always, you were first up.
Yeah, no, so I I can thank you. I know it's tough to be on.
But we, we're not gonna have more for members. We're not excluding anyone.
So I, no, that's good to know. Thank you. I think that. If the select board. Could formalize. Members in the at the upcoming select board meeting in August, in the first meeting or the second meeting would be great, even if it is just. Three or four, and the specific people you named, I think that would be a great starting point. To obviously legitimize the committee. And then at a local barbecue. Is where L C P C will have the opportunity to maybe really strong push with uh brochures. Um who have obviously asked us being able to be there, present and in a sense just educate on what. The what a wastewater project is all about. And hopefully, we can get. A couple of people to be at least interested enough to sign up and come to a meeting. And maybe if we, if they agree with what we're doing, maybe we can come to the select board to ask to become an official member. So that's what I'm hope, that's what I'm very hopeful for at the time, what it does. Uh to help L C P C in this effort. Um. I will mention or act as a reference to in our coordination agreement with uh Stelling Environment Service. We were hopeful for a very important assignment. Uh to develop some sort of splash page or webpage to act as the main uh. The main point for all like visual media. For this particular project. And so that's something else in PC will do. So the town will have to develop like a specific splash page or webpage. That has like summary of everything we've done so far, uh maybe in videos that we've done or anything like that. L C P C will be leading that charge. Um. But it would be great that if we could. Obviously, get some constructive feedback from the wastewater committee that we develop. So that's kind of an example, but L C P C will be doing to push the project forward. And I just, I told all of you, we obviously will be doing.
So I guess, I mean, in the past, Seth would just call a meeting, um. Is it not to us to be calling meetings, doing some of this stuff? I mean, I'm just kind of not, just not sure.
So. Similar to how the schoolhouse and schoolhouse communities ran where I created the GAN, send it out. I let I notify you all with readings and how it's possible. L C P C will still do that. I let I notify you all of the readings and how it's as comparable. LCPC will still do that. But what Wolkett will need to do is similar to how you uh have information about the select or have will have set dates for meetings. Uh, current typically post the agendas, purple post the wastewater agendas, just to give them a more uh a truly official warning. So LCPC will still in a way lead the wastewater committee meetings. Um, but we want everything to be publicly available.
Well, I like that we set a date and, you know, if we, there's nothing to do, we can always cancel.
Of course, yeah.
It's just really the same as we same coordination we have with schools.
Same, uh again, same coordination with the schoolhouse, just different topic.
Different topic.
Different topic. So that that's what we're aiming for. And uh again, I know all of you have a lot of the pain that I know I haven't been asking to be part of another form of community as well. Um, but the project that we're pursuing is extremely important.
Yeah.
And it's difficult to have the town interface. So again, no, I I'm not asking for any action today. It's just something we keep on our mind for the upcoming select work meetings. We're hoping to find a a a formalized committee.
Right.
So we are in the process of me designing our website.
Oh, great.
Um, you know, any ideas we can share our way in the universe is pretty I think hard to navigate, you know. And looking at other towns and so forth um.
Yeah.
I like when you go on and
they have a calendar, you go on a calendar, you hit that date. Brings up the meetings, it brings up the agenda, it brings up the Zoom thing. You know, just right there instead. Everything.
Yeah, um, I know our website isn't the greatest either, but I think of some really good examples. Uh, I always tell us one of the staff as well as Bradlin, RPC. I think their website's pretty intuitive and clean, uh, easy to understand. So I think they have a really good website and that way, and I think at the bottom of it actually says uh who either designed it or was service they just brought it for. So that may be a good example.
Okay, yeah, I know. I mean, I actually understand what what you're saying is to it was wastewater and it was let's not have a formal committee beginning the town of Wolkett. And that means it needs to be posted and so basically everything in the schoolhouse.
So I'm gonna put on um before when it's born, maybe in the in the wastewater community, you know, it's moving along and we are look really looking for you know, other people to join just and that will just be a a way of
Yeah.
A lot of people are not to be giving everything to me. What they sign up for now, it's just
beginning, yeah, announcing it even like you said, nobody signs up, just letting people know it exists.
Right.
Is is obviously important first steps take. Um, and I know Tori and I have been are currently are the main people when it comes to outreach. Uh, that will be shifting with Tori with uh assistance from senior staff um as we did so. Um, but what I want to do um outreach, so for example, uh, a Wolkett barbecue. Um, holding like information sessions in the future, having hybrid options more online. Uh, as well. I don't want to, once the committee becomes a thing, like I said, a formalized committee, uh, I don't know who will be veganized, who's Seth still. Seth will still be the main point of contact and leader of that. I'm not sure. Tori may be brought into that later as well. But um Tori will be helping LCPC on a contact for any outreach or any community engagement within uh this community.
Controlling meeting sounds scary.
Now, I think that's really extremely important.
Yeah.
Um, you know, forming a committee, having it on the webpage and following the activity. Uh, because it is a complex project. Um, it has it has complex impact. And I I I think probably there's been enough discussion for around the town. Um, they clearly it's in less reformalizes, just a lot of things are missing. We've got meetings with stone.
It's done.
Yeah, yeah. And so they try to just, you know, old numbers way off that way. And they're like lost the residents. And uh, you know, a few days later, the residents are up the mountain, which is kind of awesome. So that'll just listen. And so it is really important that we and there's also the focus that that the that the wastewater project affects the village here. But it also affects everybody in town that they don't realize.
Yeah.
But they don't know how to interpret yourself.
Yeah, and that's where um this is important to step in.
Yeah.
To thank you. You know.
We're having a regular set date. This is a lot of things this committee needs to be doing. The ordinance making some really important decisions in terms of um who has to be in it. It's a choice, you know, there's a lot of decisions we need to make and work on with ordinance.
Yeah, um, and
That's not gonna happen.
Night.
No, of course. Um, and then LCPC also uh within our order plan, that will be included in stones, P D R C middle. Uh, assisting the town developing that ordinance. Uh. Warning the mon boat in the appropriate time across the line. I mean, we're all, it's gonna be LCPC all day and flying. Between every step between town uh with the town. So again, you're not alone on it. We're gonna be here to assist you and if possible, do as much work as we can. Um, without having a good follow up.
Yes. Imagine if with all this flooding laid on here, if they if they had a town watering sewer connection. How much less problems you have with all these wells? If you're just if it's all the ones somewhere or doesn't get flooded. You have to test everyone's house talk. You have to respect it, can't be fucked. He's only taking going to enforcement to solve half of your problems in that flood.
Well, looking very looking from the year, we have problems.
The difference the the major difference here is you have the elevation to get what you want out of the flood. Around you. That is the difference. You're not stuck in the bottom like everyone else. That'll be a, that means your resources, anything you stick in. You're gonna limit how much you have in the flood. That'll be the big
Against the library. That was their major problem. Better be more billiard with your mother.
If you have one bridge connection, that's not bad. It's not like it's not like the ones that are underneath the river is well. You can't visually expect that stuff when it breaks. It just happens. It's on a bridge. The best part about bridge ones, you can see if it's broken and you can fix. But it's under a river and it's boring. Or under a river trying to fix that is engineering a loss. You have to get it.
Yeah, I may.
That's expertise.
But yeah, there's a I mean, there are, oh, yeah, there's a lot of things that can that can happen. And again, there's a lot of questions. And those are probably questions that residents have.
Right, but I mean, all of those major towns and our cities in that area. They water for, I spent two weeks, one because it affected their whole system of power. Oh.
Also depending on their levels. A lot of towns, there's an element of looking for it. The big, the big thing is depending on how you deal with it. We had a deal back, but we cleaned our well, cleaned our stuff, we chlorinated it, we tested it. And then we put a wall back online. But besides that, a lot of other towns, worse though. It's sitting right on the flood plain. So they're well flooded out. They had to go through the state process. But if your resource is much higher up. You can actually with a lot of the water stuff. You have so much protection area. If you plant it right, your source protection, you don't put it where all the drains, that's the key piece. That's the big difference. If you stick your middle of where floods. That's when you're but you have the advantage of pipe for anywhere you're gonna need to get stuff around here. Because you're not gonna have enough space anywhere to fly around. With all that, these rivers are draining.
When do you um think that you um you go on the side, what form of meeting?
Um, we were, so if people were asked, you know, they might be available on Monday, but not does that have some things that you can add to us about when you're available?
Yeah, you know, uh, I'll talk, you know, Tori and I will talk and figure out.
On Monday, I think.
Yeah, I think on Monday five, I think that's for my part here. Um, Tori and I will propose some dates and times.
Okay.
And I I assume it'll be one month meeting.
Yeah, so that's fine. It's just if, um, you know, try to engage other people to come on board. Um, kind of need to say man.
Of course, yeah.
If you could just get back to us and you you know, we could do more of anything. Anything else? Tori, anything for you? So. Passing the time, you know.
Yeah, so uh, yeah, I think we all get to know each other. Thank you for allowing me to work with uh all of you. Uh, you know, I'll still check in to see how uh the schoolhouse is going. It's I'm I'm not, I'm three thousand miles away in a couple of weeks, but you know, we gotta take a moment now.
Thanks for coming back for the grant.
Yeah, I will. I will be back. I will be back in May, isn't it? Uh, so I'll see how everything has turned out and progress is for me.
And that's pictures of your new town.
Oh, yeah.
Love this, yeah.
Um, okay, so it's a small mountain in Southern California called Tehachapi. It's a, and it's very new. Um, about thirteen thousand people. So small, again, largely some of the towns here, but small in California, it's here. So, you know, uh, sadly, because I can't drive by one here. But um, I mean, everyone else in PC is really good and probably so, yeah.
You don't wanna stay for the winter?
Yeah, oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to the heat. It's not like I'm waiting. It's gonna be a hundred degrees and I would probably miss when it's fifteen degrees. I don't know what's this way.
It's supposed to be like fifty or sixty.
Yeah, but um, I'll let all of you go to the beginning of your meeting, um, but thank you very much for the opportunity.
That's great, yeah.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thanks, Tori.
Oh, yeah. Uh, I'm from Northern California. We don't get along with it supposedly. It's almost not that. And then um, then we will be in contact in the above the next steps with the schoolhouse. If I'm have a good night.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Passing in to report.
Um, so the focus of the past couple of weeks or so has been um not on the project, so like the management and pavement on uh the response um to the flood. Uh, the only thing I just want to bring up now is we built up all day was graduated. Nine of one. And that will have a dumpster up like the transfer station. Um, and we're gonna allow flood victims to get rid of their stuff there if they haven't already. People are in the dumpster there now. Um, and uh uh, we're uh gonna put the dumpster up high. We uh may or may not have the excavator available, so we're going to have to work around that, but we've got a team that'll be there uh just to make sure that was happening. But uh for the uh for the items that come in as for plug um, button items, um, we will keep track of that and that can be part of the a theme. Everybody wants to join in on God Day. We're welcome to. It's kind of fun.
Are you gonna come on the same computer?
But two
Oh, yeah.
Two people.
Oh, okay.
So you want to be flawed and one part. I don't know how you even have a figured out.
That's all. That's all I really have.
Okay.
Um.
I mean, almost suggested we uh label that we the
It would be good. I haven't run it.
I'm, I just haven't had time. Thank you. Um.
Do we want any updates on funding? Ema was here today. They seem to be, I talked to a lady and said, well, why are you here? You never came to the last flow. I, you know, I talked to him, he answered. Had to do everything online.
And he, she said, because it's gotten so much um press that they're really pushing them. So they're doing doing a lot more than they that they did than they did last time for us. Um.
Yeah, this seems to be the first uh theme of first with main theme of business is what it sounds like. Uh, but all we really did today was went down and lifted that iron. Uh, which is a pretty impressive destruction. Pretty impressive. And then looked at the big color. And that's really all they wanted to see is now my they want, they wonder whether our two worst places. Then they say another change thing coming. But the other piece of good news, I think we've learned is that um, they extend the the time.
It's continuing.
Continues.
Usually it's like the day of the rain, another two days of the rain. This is the day of the rain and hasn't ended. So anything in between. It's nice.
I think it's worth the damage and repair um with all the road through the exception of black iron. The road has been working so publically at an amazing level. Uh, I think they're getting the fire where but we need for them to take a little bit of a break because they're being stressed, very stressed. Um. We did, I remember last time we were here, we authorized the painters. So the painters are here. Um, and we've been using the excavator between putting in new colors and picking up blood iron. So it's taken three to four days, what we're gonna get all the spores created, all picked up. And we noticed that we picked up some of ours and then blue stuff came out, so we might have to move around.
And we learned that FEMA will pay for that.
Yeah.
If they put it out to the doorstep in our town right wing, that's considered debris.
And they will pay for it under the debris.
The community.
So my neighbor, boss of the road, who was last name Ryan, we have a big dumpster.
Yeah.
This room. And they will be able to do the funds back. They're gonna have to do the big work.
Yeah.
He gets it, I drive in. Everyone I talked to in the area that I know automatically are would read, you know.
Well, they, yes, and they
If you do it first, you don't file. First you do the two month.
Right, right.
Then you go to FEMA and then they reject it. So you gotta file it again.
Because Because they got it. And they're just taking the, they want a lot of information. Pictures of like your assurance, claim denial, things like that.
I mean, and there's some we don't know, and maybe you know. The the red farm uh on fif- on fifteen. But yeah.
And with. They were too.
They got upset on.
I don't know what you're getting at, if they're going through it.
But we're not.
Taking what we want or.
We don't, we don't know if we have a big loss to take it or not, so it's really stupid so far.
It's uh started, it's now.
They're brothers, friends, or whatever, that.
Tell me, can you see it?
It wasn't.
It's on.
No, that's, that is um. Wants to rally with. That's very positive.
Uh Dan. In the valley.
No, no, the uh the other one. Most well.
Um.
We don't see that property. I was gonna see it tomorrow. It's giving more of a table on.
All right.
That's. We contacted W United Way and. Yeah. If it do, it do with them. Um. Uh and I was very grateful, right?
United Way connected with a lot of folks on School Street, and she'll be back next week, I understand. To uh talk with folks on Rust A Deeds in tech provided flood. And uh might have a lot of information under contact. Person for them uh um issues even beyond uh the flooding. So it should be helpful for us.
Red Cross being through today. So our book is separate. I'm a serious.
It looks like we've got many of a lot of stuff. It's really great. It's.
This weekend.
It's still.
Yeah, the fire department had barbecue for. Lot of lot of victims Saturday to Sunday, which they really appreciated. I think they just appreciated sitting with each other and talking about. You know, there with stories.
So I genuinely. And then. The handkerchief is gonna be a lot for. Supplies. You know, suddenly.
Yeah.
Yeah, I am heard was very generous.
Um like the state geologist has been after nine walking. Um according to Dan Bogart, they said it's not sliding anymore. I mean, I don't know what else to do. It's private property and. I've sent him all the informations and so forth. I don't think he has a lot of those grounds. Really bad mess. Up against the. It's all hot now. We're gonna skip. Private area um. So we need to review the school street preliminary plans that were still. Last meeting, last meeting. Um. I did receive something from. Mister. Um. It says the preliminary plans that I sent you on June twenty seventh. Show a new trust bridge that would have a. Similar appearance to the existing trust bridge. This is consistent with what we recommended during scoping and the town agreed to. Um. If the Department of Historic Preservation agrees with our assessment, we could use a more conventional. Type of bridge consisting of steel girders with a concrete deck. So um he needs to find out, but he's. Thinking he might wanna change it with our opinion. Kind of look like the bridge on uh Elmore Pond Road, maybe. Just. Um.
So it makes me a movie dress. Would be a flat. With the bridge.
Some of the advantages of the multi-garter bridge include low construction cost. Low future maintenance. A trust bridge would need to be washed. After each winter to renew a simulated salted degree to prevent deterioration. Steel trust members um. We would recommend galvanizing new trust. Brigs to provide the longest lasting corrosion potential. But after some point in the future, the trust would likely need to be painted as the galvanized coating starts to fade out. The multi-garter bridge would likely utilize. Watering steel, which would not require any future painting. Um. Shorter construction duration. The duration of the school street closure will be slightly shorter than the multi-garter. Bridge compared to a trust bridge since a trust bridge is more complex to construct.
I mean, looks.
We don't have to make up our mind about that today. You know.
Less expensive octane, which would be the best, I mean. But still, you look at the one in Northville on Bridge Street. It's similar to what we got in town. They're using uh some sort of special coating, so it's not galvanized.
Yeah, I love that.
The last design I would like.
I didn't like it at first, but I really like that design.
What is that?
What is it?
I don't know. I don't think we put it in, but we got hold of someone from.
Yeah, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go take with.
It's it's a. It's a press phone. But it's. It's only with a special coating, so they don't have to paint it, they don't have to clean it.
Right.
And that thing's been there ten years now. And they crowded it. It's a big assembly. Hmm. You want to problem here, this band is twice like. But I don't know if there's a way we can bring in two preassembled trucks. Hold it together, then.
Well, I think when he, he's gotta reach out to somebody and see if he can even change it. I think after that, we should have a one so maybe, because we have a lot of questions. Before we make that decision, we do need to make the decision on the plans and. Terms of how it goes on the road or so forth, not tonight.
Yeah, I had no. I had an appointment about. You're gonna be engineering.
Right.
And that same one, I would say. This is the first. Suggest the change or third.
Yeah, just came today.
Yeah, the thing is, they're funding it.
Yeah.
If they're funding it, they're gonna make it as cheap as.
Yeah.
Um but as far as improving the plans.
Yeah. I'll just tell them this note from us.
Whatever, unless anyone else. As I know.
Um this one last thing, you know, it's getting late. I haven't had time for looking at it either, but um. LCPC also reached out to me because they're putting together. They were putting together all the things we need um for FEMA to get the most. To get the most money that.
You know, codes and standards and all that stuff.
But one of the things she told me was that um. If we can have. Blood hazard delivered for their lives. And I said, I feel like I have never seen that. And um. I'm gonna send that out to everybody. There's a model um. Bylaw that we sent me that we probably should look at. I sent him an email and I said, well, is this something it's done designing? This is something this landlord does. It sounded like it was sent to us some time ago, because what it basically does is like. Um any new structures, if they're in the river, river corridor. They need a conditional use.
Uh.
Blood hazard, there in floodway, I don't know.
Um I'll find out more about it. We'll send them to you. Something to look at if you can get more reimbursement. In the future.
Like too much is from going on. Something else.
I recommend anybody to see how powerful that barrier was. You could walk down the flood iron river. Where it's run right down to.
It's.
It's pretty easy.
It's easier than going the other way.
To walk. If if you're driving, you know. But when you're pretty lost, it just passed her house, it starts. Moving down there, you know.
We're trying to move through a little bit, so we need to move also a stream still. I mean, you see a stream can be wired cable. Without three quarters of the road, but yeah.
Little tree right, look, maybe it's just like. Way down there, just manning your own, but. It went over the bridge way up. I mean, where did that water come from?
What could fall?
No. No.
Oh, you had that last one from there? He said it was six foot under that area. And originally that water was three and a half foot orange with that dam. We say we control the waterfall, I couldn't. Can you do it now? No, I'm on, it's gonna put the range of the. Water or something, the base of the dam.
Or half a foot.
It's gonna be summer. Yeah. I didn't, didn't need that. Yeah. I'll say if anyone sees.
Great.
I'm sorry, Dave. No, that's all.
I'm not at my sharpest.
It goes to sign the tax.
Yes.
And this goes for the, I don't know, it's one again.
But uh.
Yeah, the, and this, we have the whole packet of it. This. Or is that for you, Dan?
All over.
It's the. Um recreation field.
We used to blast.
It looks like a copy, but I don't know.
It showed up Tuesday. Something to land at the night.
I don't know, Tuesday.
So you are from New York. And what Ramon is. Can you?